Welcome her to the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
She just doesn't know what time it is.
Okay. Do you want to get any fruit before we get started?
Yeah.
Let me have those bags. Make all some noise. Let's do it. It is good, it is good.
I'm ready.
Ready? Let's do it.
Good evening, welcome to the October twenty-fourth City of Oldsmar Council Work Session. It is six P M. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna get started with our city attorney, Tom Trask, starting with the invocation and our pledge allegiance. Please rise.
Our heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the tasks before us, bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. This we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'm gonna open up the Oldsmar Citizens Open Forum. Do you wanna speak to the council?
It's related to this agenda item, so.
Okay.
I mean, I can't say anything ahead except my opinion.
If you want, you can come up and speak. You get five minutes, just state your name and your address with where your fence is.
Dale Renbior, four zero three Arlington Avenue, Oldsmar. Good evening, everyone. Remove the speed humps. Oh, sorry, wrong issue. Being the chairman of the planning board, we discussed this at the meeting, the one before the last one. And we all came to the consensus, we like the way we do it is the way we do it. And unless you change the city code, we will continue to do it the way we do it. There are two criteria for planning board member appointments, and that is you are an electorate and you live here. Bingo, that's it. No other requirements. Well, you can't be a teenager. That's kind of alluded to because of teen official members. We all, I don't know if this is in notes or what, but we had the, the way we do it is, the planning board does it, is you, someone submits an application and it's dated. When there's a vacancy, we look at all the applications and then we interview everyone and we say, okay, your application, first come, first served. Stay engaged, keep coming to the meetings, and an opening will likely occur, and which have. And everyone's happy with that. Even the last two members that were alternates now became, we lost two people, and they became full-time members or were completely comfortable with waiting their turn, so to speak. So we do it by date of application. And, and thanks for, thanks for coming, keep coming, stay involved, and your turn will come. And everybody's happy with that system, and it's worked well for us. And I don't know how long they've been doing it like that, but I've been involved in the planning board for a long time. In it, out of it, and back in it, and that's kind of the way it's always been done. And there's nothing in the code that defines that, and we are authorized by the code to manage our own in-house business. And so that's the way we all, there was no vote, it was a consensus, then we would like to continue in that manner.
Thank you, Dale.
That's what the planning board. If no one else has anything to say.
How many, how many years you been on that board? Do you know how many?
Remember, it's, I'm getting so old. I think.
Well, it's gotta be at least over ten, cuz when I.
I did get a little award once, a plaque, so I.
Some milestone was hit, right?
Yeah.
But I, I think I joined the planning board in ninety-six.
Oh, wow.
And I quit to run for council and, and kind of just fooled around, didn't do anything. And then I joined the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board at the same time, you're allowed to do it. And, and I left the Board of Adjustment, just stayed with the Planning Board. It has to be at least eleven, twelve years now, I don't know. I think you would probably know better than anybody.
It looks like you were appointed as an alternate in twenty-fourteen.
Fourteen?
As an alternate, so that's.
How long ago is that? That's nine years. When did I get the award for?
Eighteen.
Probably from five.
Yeah. Anyway, but then they keep pushing me in the chair. I don't, you know, I try to get everybody an opportunity to be the chair, because everybody needs to learn to be the chair. Because that's the hard part, is keeping it organized. And you can just sit up there and, I don't have any questions, you know, that's no good. And I had Pat Polier to chair once, and she actually had to sit there and got so flustered, I wasn't even involved, and she made me chair the meeting because she just didn't know what to do. So Bob Harvey, he finally succumbed to vice chair. This time now Bob's what, thirty-five years been on the board? And the idea is, we're supposed to be just innocent citizens that don't know anything about anything, except what's good for the heart of the city, or what's good for the city and in our hearts. And that's the way we approach the planning board. And Jared knows, he was there, you know, and that's, that's the criteria. And we are untrained, and it's up to the city to convince the Tatiana's group to tell us exactly what all the criteria are for any items we are reviewing. And to be any more than that makes you a professional. And so I don't know if you can actually train us, a layperson, to be a planning. Expert? I don't, I'm not one, but I know what, I know what I think's good for the city, so. Anyway, that's what I gotta say.
Last thing is, I wanna speak for the board. We're grateful that you're here this evening to talk to us and give us your feedback. We really do appreciate it, Dale.
And I felt this is pretty important, you know, when I first read it, it said, how do you, how do you rate a volunteer? Thanks for coming, that's how you rate them, you know, so. That's why I, I had to bring the planning board's opinion to the forefront.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's keep, I'm gonna close the Oldsmar Citizens Open Forum, and let's get started with discussion, item one, discussion of board appointment process. And what, I got a suggestion, do you guys mind starting with the Veterans Advisory Board? Well, I think we should go through each one, one by one.
Okay.
If you guys wanna. Before I forget, I wanna, for the, for the people that are watching TV, Katie Gannon is running late, she's at work. I just wanna mention that Katie, Councilwoman Katie Gannon will be here soon, so I just wanted to mention that.
Maybe.
Maybe, okay, maybe, okay.
Mayor, I was just gonna let you know, I was prepared with the PowerPoint if you needed it to go board by board. If not, just going board by board, a thorough discussion will work as well.
Ready, let's do it.
Yeah, yes, it does have some of the things about each board in it, so we could do that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can start first with the Leisure Services Advisory Board. So they do have, as we've discussed, they do have their own bylaws that does lay out this appointment process that they do follow, but those have not been ratified by city council. So they do interview their own applicants currently, and then they choose one and that only that one applicant goes to council. So it would be, does council wish to ratify that, what's been going on, or would you like to implement any changes?
Any comments?
I just, I think the point that we were here for was to have a uniform process for the boards that weren't quasi-judicial, correct?
Correct.
Right, so if this is the process that we like, I think we can essentially with, was it Veterans Code Enforcement?
Code Enforcement is quasi.
Board of Adjustment is quasi. So with all the rest of them, when I was running through the bylaws, I mean essentially is it, do we wanna allow, as Dale had mentioned during the open forum, to allow that, the interview process to go? I think the members of the board that are currently sitting there appreciate it, they like doing it that way. I think my point, when all of this had come up. Council still has the opportunity to turn that candidate down, I guess is, is my whole thing. Where it's, would city council need to be the ones doing the interviews, or would you want the folks on the boards doing those interviews and then passing them up to us? Cuz we would still have final authority as to whether or not that person.
I think we should continue to let the boards do the interviewing and let them pick who they want. Anybody else?
I agree with that, and then I think when that agenda item comes before council, is ideally it would be great, especially if it's a new appointment, for that person to attend the meeting. Otherwise postpone it till a later date, or, you know, if they can't, if they were able to show up to that individual board's meeting and then not make it here, it's like, well, not that we're that any more important than the board itself, but it's like, show a little effort to make it officially official, right? Cuz it's like the recommendation versus confirmation type thing.
And we always have the opportunity to ask them questions during the meetings as well, so yeah, I would see that.
We still have a chance to talk.
That'd be a good added requirement if it's not in there already.
So are you okay with that? I, I agree, Jared?
I, I agree too. I think part of the exercise we're trying to go through is make it the same process for all the boards, cuz they're all kind of all over the place. And I agree with that. Let them continue to interview, let them continue to suggest who they wanna bring, bring it in front of council, as Vice Mayor Knapp said, interview here, and like you said, we always have the chance to turn them down if we need to.
So like Vice Mayor said, if a new applicant is approved by the board, whatever board, they need to come to city council, if they're not gonna be here.
Give them at least one chance to reschedule, and then if after that, then if they're still committed, we can keep trying, but obviously if there's some urgency in filling that board position, then we have to, along with the board, be able to act in a swift manner.
I think we have. We have a consensus for all boards, for all of them.
For the advisory, do you still wanna talk about quasi-judicial after this?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, I just one other thing, is it every open application that each applicant has the opportunity to interview, or is it the first come, first served?
It's the one, so what's also been happening, and I do have a slide on that, is, so for reappointments, when there is a person and their term is up, their term is expiring and they want to still serve, they are immediately sent to council for reappointment. And then the other instance that does occur is there's an, there is a vacancy, and there's two alternates, so the alternate, one of the alternates goes to council for appointment. So that's been happening a lot with the alternates. So would we wanna continue that, or?
Well, sure, I mean, the most recent alternate becomes a full member, I mean, that happened to me, right?
Mm-hmm.
The longest-tenured alternate.
Yeah, you're on the board, you just.
Yeah, I think we should keep that. We are, we are consistent with that, yeah, cuz that's.
That's your, your standard practice, right, is longest-tenured alternate.
We're essentially appointing the alternate to fill in the vacancy in the future.
If there's three applicants and one submitted an application in twenty-twenty, one in twenty-twenty-two, one in twenty-twenty-three, and there's a, the second alternate spot is open because a full board member left and the first alternate became a full board member. Is the process all three are interviewed, or it's the most recent applicant? The person from twenty-twenty, it's been on file the longest, forgive me, not the most recent, but it's been on file for the longest amount of time.
That would be a question.
Well, for, so Leisure Services and Veterans Advisory, they interview everyone, and they're just selecting their, they select from that. As I believe the planning board chair said, they have been interviewing everyone and then selecting the first person that is, the application was submitted first. So I believe the direction here would be for the advisory boards to interview their own and then select, they select their own.
Right.
From that interview process.
And however, whichever deference they wanna give to whichever applicant, whether it's been on file the longest or the most.
As far as selection criteria goes.
Right, yes.
Leave it up to them between the interview process itself and any other.
Yeah.
Information.
Okay.
But backing up a step before even the interview process and the collection of volunteers who wanna volunteer and be on the boards, what does that process look like? I know that's more controlled by you and how you'll manage this, but how do we make sure that the next person still lives here, or do we just open up a period of time when there's a vacancy to collect new people who are interested at that point?
That's a really great question, because so far we've been keeping applications on file for years, I understand. And that can be, I think, hard for staff, because we have to keep that on file. And then also your second point was. I think it also just depends if there was no applications on file, and that sometimes can happen, then we need to go out and advertise and open it up for a period, hey, we're accepting applications right now. So I think it just depends.
More often than not, though, and granted, obviously you haven't been here for a very long time, but can probably look back at the records as well, is most of the time there's been some bit of a backlog to fall upon, right? And, and not be doing the opposite of advertising or having to go on social media or whatever to say, hey, we've, we've got nobody, can somebody please come join and help us? Usually there's been.
There's been a backlog for most of the boards, and I do have the rosters with me, and most of the rosters show that there are some people waiting. I don't know how long, it could be past five years, or if they're still interested. I'm not sure how long they've, they applied.
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, I would think that keeping them on file for a certain period of time is probably sufficient, and then, you know, dropping them from the list. And if, anytime a vacancy happens, even if you've got a backlog, still put it on social, like, hey, we're still always willing to welcome other people to be lining up and waiting for the opportunity to serve. So that way then somebody says, oh, I'm not sure, or, you know, check your status, or anything like that. So that moving forward, and maybe even all the folks that you have on file, letting them know, we're gonna keep it on record for X amount of time, and then after that, we need you to resubmit to, you know, recommit.
So now I guess the question for Tom that always comes up in these meetings, is this similar to how other cities do it, or?
There's no standard. Every city can handle it a little bit differently.
Seem like the best practices, or?
Ultimately, you're to be making the decision. What I worry about in representing you as the council members is you get someone recommended to you, and you feel an obligation to appoint that person, you're kind of just pressured into that, because the recommendations come to you. But you don't want to vote that person down because of that pressure. So, you know, that's one thing that, that I'm worried about and concerned about, is it's almost like it's a pure ratification under part, and it really shouldn't be a pure ratification.
Okay.
You should wanna be able to control who's on, on those boards for reasons other than they just applied, you know, the longest time available. It may be someone that has no qualifications, or has been an outspoken, you know, political person that you just don't wanna support the thoughts, or the, you know, the, you know, the program that they're trying to establish. But you're gonna feel that you're obligated to, to ratify that appointment. So those are the things that I worry about.
Anything else?
So when we get, and maybe I just haven't seen them as much, but when we have an opening, we're advertising, correct?
No, not that I'm aware of, we have not advertised. I think the, the only one that has been is just our Public Art Task Force that we just had, but that was brand new and for the upcoming year.
Do you think that would enhance our community engagement segment of what we're trying to achieve by showing more activity in the government, like, hey, there's an opening, come on in, having more touches with the public, or thoughts on that?
I don't think the applications flow from there being an opening, you can fill them out at any point, so I mean, even just a general, and I don't know if the Vice Mayor was saying kind of, we're always accepting applications, I mean, so you could.
We are, but just.
Advertise it that way, instead of saying, hey, there's an alternate spot open, we're accepting applications for thirty days, submit them, you can always submit one.
You can always, but I think just kind of to keep it fresh, or, not that we're gonna be advertising every day, right, and not doing the extreme of not ever mentioning it, but if a vacancy has happened, you know, one, you know, congratulate when those people get appointed, and then two, shameless plug for, hey, go, if you're interested in serving. So just here and there, being wise to kind of keep it elevated near the top of people's minds of, hey, is, this opportunity's out there.
But I think the specific to Councilmember Buckman's point, if there's no applications on file, then we have to say there's an opening on this.
Yes, absolutely.
But that's the thing, is so if your application's on file for Leisure Services, cuz it seems like a lot of people want to be on Leisure Services, right? But something comes up for the planning board, and we don't have any applications on file, and just be hypothetical, we'd like to get that filled. If your application's on file for another board, you can, you can update your application, or you can essentially file an addendum, that sort of thing, and just let everybody know that as well, even if you're on file for a different board.
Sure.
But yeah, then. If there's an opening, do we advertise, or do we continue to pull from the applications that are on file? Is that what you were asking?
No, I think it's, I think you can always apply, but I think anytime there's an opening, or an alternate opening, or we know somebody retiring, or resigning, whatever it is, it's an opportunity for us to engage the public again. And it's an opportunity to say, hey, there's an opening, if you'd like to apply, gives us an opportunity to fill out more, get more on file, maybe it's not the right time, we can discuss that when that happens, but it just gives another opportunity to drive more volunteers from the community that may not know that it's out there. They may not see one, two, three, but they saw four and five from an ad perspective of openings that are out there, just.
So do they generally, and when there's a spot open, do you do a specific?
Yeah, if that's not too much staff time.
I think we do it already, so I'll confirm, but I think it's in our magazine, so I know that it has been in the past, I don't know if it's on this current issue, but we certainly advertise.
We put a blanket post, I think, in the last magazine about board vacancies, but not a specific one.
I just wanna give you guys an example at the Janice Miller Citizens Academy, when I, when I went to that, my first meeting this year, I mentioned to the, the attendees that, about volunteering for the board. And one of the applicants or their classmates actually sent me an email saying, you know, I wanna apply. And I'm like, great, that's, you know, we'd be glad to have you, and she's, well, what board should I apply for? I'm like, I don't know, but, but you know, there's people out there that wanna apply, and I hope she did apply, but just wanted to share that, that, you know, if we promote it as council members, people will apply.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
I look, I look at it as keeping the, the pipeline full and healthy of people to have that backlog be there. Ready to interview people and make a decision as the vacancies happen, because we know they do.
Yeah, and like when people move, wasn't it, wasn't Erin Pelton on a board, and then she moved to California?
Yes.
But like, say her application's on there, do you think in, in the moving cross-country, you'd be like, you know what, I also have to stop by City Hall and withdraw my application that I filled out two years, I mean, it just wouldn't happen, I mean, those sorts of things.
That's why I'm thinking some sort of, you know, you stay on, on file for a period of time, and then, you know, all those that are currently on file can be notified that after whatever that time comes.
Yeah.
You need to resubmit, reaffirm your commitment to interest to serve.
Well, if we're gonna do that, we'd need a date or a time certain.
Yes.
But so what we.
A year?
A lot of things can change in a year. But, you know, over the course of a year, do we really have that many vacancies we're filling? You know, it might, at most amount to a handful on average, right, of vacancies that we fill. So then if you have five times that across all the different boards of people waiting, then a year, I mean, I would, I was thinking more than two years, like every two years.
Which would line up to, because they're two-year terms generally on those boards, right?
Some boards are two, some are three.
Yes.
That's the other thing I was thinking of, since we're three-year terms, do we wanna maybe consider making that three-year terms for all the boards? Instead of, some of them are two, like Tom said, some are three, do we wanna change them all to three?
Once again, we're asking.
All the two?
Asking volunteers for a three-year commitment versus two, might be too, might be a lot to ask.
Yeah. I, I mean, I guess we can get into that separately, but since we were just trying to zero in on a application retention, I think two would be fair, where it's like, okay, I just applied, and two year goes by, maybe a few names have fallen off, I'm definitely still committed, and then after two years, you know, they can get an email saying, hey, we just, maybe it's as simple as that, hey, we just wanna reaffirm your commitment, should we keep your application on file? Instead of having to make them reapply.
Yeah.
Nothing's changed, right? They still have the same address, same interests in boards, they're still interested. There's probably ways to automate those kind of tasks, to say, oh, hey, it's been two years since your date. Hey, I.
Okay.
Yes, I'd agree with that.
So then going back to, I don't know where you wanted to go next, but you then touched on terms.
Yeah.
Term length.
How do you feel about it? Would you, you okay with two-year terms across the board, or you, would you consider three-year terms?
I don't think.
That is up to council.
Has it come up?
Just leave it at two?
I mean, just leave it as is, cuz that's what Tom says, some are two, some are three, yeah.
Yeah, and it hasn't, it hasn't been an issue with volunteers, and again, we've had a good amount of people applying over the years, so.
And there is no term limit, so they can keep going every two years and go back and go back and go back.
Can we, we reappoint on every reappointment? So we still have that control?
Yes, it would still come to you for their reappointment.
Okay.
All right.
So we have already talked about planning board, that being an advisory board, cuz we just discussed that for the three advisory boards. They do have a, I believe it's in their ordinance, just so you know, that the term shall be filled, not more than forty-five days after a vacancy, so that is in there, just as a note.
And that ordinance is specific only to the planning board currently as it relates to vacancies?
Yes, I only found that for a planning board in my research. And then Veterans Advisory was our third advisory board. And so the only notes here, I would say, are currently, I've checked the resolution over a few times, and it's the only resolution I found where they didn't have to be an elector or a resident of the city, just so that you know.
So a couple of things I want, I mentioned to Kristen before the meeting about the Veterans Advisory Board, it looks like most of the members are all veterans. But she did mention here in her notes here that there are no criteria for membership to consist of veterans. So that's what, I didn't know that. I don't know if you guys knew that.
No, I, I knew that, but I think we've always appointed some sort of veteran, and only a veteran is usually applied to that board historically, I believe.
It's not mandatory, it's just custom, right?
It's a, it's more of a custom tradition, and I think we need to codify that for.
She said this is the only one where we do not require for members of this board to actually be a resident of the city, the rest of them.
Yeah, I did not find it in its resolution. The other ones all mention it, I was just making note of that, just in case, um, council wanted to discuss it.
Board members are citizens of Oldsmar.
Dave McKinley is.
No, he's not on the board.
He's not on a board.
He's not.
I'd have to see the list, I don't know.
It would be interesting to see if going over, granted, it wouldn't be easy necessarily to do, to see how, were there any holes, let's say, of, or gaps where there were instances, people serving that were not citizens of the city? To where it's like, if we were to change that, would it handicap us in, in terms of being able to keep that board full? I don't know. But I mean, it hasn't really presented itself as an issue, because veteran issues go beyond just city limits of Oldsmar, right? We wanna be welcomed in that sense.
Right, but I'd say the member of the board moves to E L W, they can't be on the board anymore?
Well, that's, right, no, I'm, I'm, that's why I think, at least for this one, where, since it's not quasi-judicial and really been voting on anything that's gonna drive major issues that affect within the city limits, and really we want them to get exposure beyond that. I don't see it being a major hurdle.
For this board, yeah.
So I don't think we make any change to that board at all, I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we will be moving on to quasi-judicial boards. See if I had anything. Okay.
Losing the red one, whatever that one.
That's okay, because we just, the last slide was just about the alternate members and reappointments, and we got that direction on that. So Code Enforcement Board, so right now, it's been the board application that was received first has been being sent to city council for appointment. So you haven't been getting the other ones that are out there, you've just only been getting one application at a time. And that one has been being appointed for, by you for as long as I could find.
I mean, I think here it's, you know, you've got top of the list who comes to us, who's applied to be on this board, and it's been historically, we would get. And it's been historically, we would get the next person on the list and say, let's appoint that person. Do we need to go through an interview process on this? I know we go through one, but do we interview three candidates or two candidates? Or do we just take the next person on the list?
You should not take the next person on the list. It should be, consider all of the others.
Who are active applicant?
Because in, in particular with regard to code enforcement, we're looking for people with special skills and expertise. So if you had second in line who has had, you know, is a Realtor, and the first in line, you know, is a newspaper article writer, well, we're going to want the Realtor on code enforcement board, because that is specifically set forth in the statute. We're looking for Realtor. So you, you really should be seeing all the applicants and making your decision from all the applicants. Pick the best one at that particular time, that's my opinion.
Right, and Tom, that was, and it's not in the slide, but that's, the statute states those, those list of qualified people.
And it's, the, the list is included in the slide as well, it's at the bottom of the first paragraph.
Whenever possible, so obviously it's not always possible.
Oh, yeah, it is, okay, yeah.
I mean, they, they included it for a reason, I guess, not to speak for Tom, but I believe that's probably where he's kind of pointing this to. There was, it was contemplated that in the municipalities, what, the ideal board makeup would be this. It's not always going to be possible, so you put the caveat in there, but that's in terms of interviewing them, if there's multiple applications, that's what we, we should do. I just think we...
So let's, let's play this out then, it's, there's a vacancy, you know, for an alternate on the code enforcement board, because presumably we bump up the alternate into a, a full seat. Historically, it would be whoever was next in line. So what would we do differently? We would have, should, should the city clerk reach out to all the current applicants in the pool? Say, hey, can you, we have a date set in the future for those that are interested in serving to come to council and...
Be interviewed.
Be interviewed, you know. Granted, if it's not a whole lot of them, then it's not a very lo, lengthy process. However, if there's ten or fifteen, it's like, do you need, want some sort of process to narrow it down before you go to a full council meeting? You know, I guess that's, you know, judgment call based on how many total you have. I mean, you want to be fair and impartial to find the best candidate out there, but I don't know if we're going to have a pool of fifteen people waiting in the wings of code enforcement service, but it's probably a dependent on certain factors.
You don't want city staff or one of the charter officials shortlisting who your applicants are.
No.
You're going to want you done.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, it's like, maybe there would be a meeting first where it's like, we would just do an application review, narrow it down and say, hey, we want to invite three, the top three that we think based on an application to the following council meeting for a formal interview, or, or just do it.
I think you're wasting time. You know, you'll know when you have your applicants in front of you, who are going to be the top three, and you're going to be making that decision right then. I think that you really can make a decision, you know, one time when it comes before you. You'll have the applications ahead of time.
Ahead.
You'll pack it.
Okay.
You'll be able to do whatever, you know, questions or answers or whatever that you're trying to get ahead of time, if you're looking by maybe calling them and talking to them.
Sure.
But making your decision, you don't need two or three meetings to do that.
Okay.
I don't want to waste your time, go ahead, yeah.
So if there's an, so if there's an opening on code enforcement, you'll give us the applications that we can review?
Yes, I would call them and schedule each one for the council meeting. I would put all of their applications in the packet for council, in the agenda packet.
Okay. Yeah, something?
I'm thinking about the, whenever possible, the board shall include an architect. There's no way to keep that narrowed to those five categories, is there? Granted, they're very broad categories, especially when you're a business person. A Realtor, I mean, could you say only bring these forward to us?
No, I don't think you want that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you want them all, but whenever possible, it should be one of these types of people, these five or whatever. And by the way, that's in Florida statute one sixty-two point five print two. It's the same language, okay?
Would it, would it make sense on the application, I know we want to try to keep it a universal thing, but can you say, if applying for code enforcement, do you tick any of these boxes on the application? Otherwise, NA, right? Doesn't matter if you're not interested in code enforcement board.
Well, the application asks them what their occupation is.
Yep.
So it's just a general question, right, not necessarily specific to are, are you, do you fit any of these buckets?
I think every one of your applications asks what their occupation is.
We can more or less kind of gather it from there.
And maybe in the agenda item, maybe in the background is where each item would just list that statute number, just as maybe as a reminder of whenever possible, that's an idea.
All right.
So we get, we get them in the packet, bring them to the meeting, select at the meeting?
Yes.
One meeting?
One meeting, one and done.
Okay.
Any, any, any research you want to do is on your own accord prior to the meeting, right? Or interviewing of, of the applicant.
Can't call?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You can call them one-on-one.
Yeah, you can call them.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've called applicants before.
Do you guys have an exhaustive list of questions you're going to want to do at some meetings? Katie asked me the type of law practice, and Dan asked me if I was a Bills fan. Like she, like they knew I was a lawyer, right? I mean, that, that was on the application, that's what, how, I'll never forget it, I mean, that's what happened.
That's exactly true.
Right.
Feel free to call at your leisure, as time permits.
No, it's just so funny, because we get into work mode sometimes when we're up here, right? And I get it, it's a work session, but I intended, but this isn't the gauntlet.
Right.
Like, if you're interested, I see here that, you know, how long have you been doing that? Like, okay, great, like, anybody else have any question? I mean, that's how it would go, you know?
I haven't had the pleasure of pointing quasi-judicial.
We're moving along, we're good here.
Have you not?
I don't think I have.
All right.
But even before, it was only one that came to us. Now it's going to be all.
Yeah, I don't want you guys to get caught up on whether it's quasi-judicial or not quasi-judicial. You still need a quality board member, no matter what process is used to, to handle something that comes before them, okay? You, you just want the best person for the position, and don't, don't worry about whether it's quasi-judicial, legislative or advisory or not. You're going to get the right person, and they're, they're going to do the right things, yeah.
Sure. So for board of adjustment, is that the same direction that you just gave code enforcement board? Would you like to continue that direction with this board?
I don't see why we're any different, yeah, honestly.
I think we should keep it the same, yes.
Just the language around, they have to be an elector, or they have to be a resident, or they have to be...
Yep.
I think that needs to be addressed. Resident or elector?
Yep.
And in this case, this one-
Resident over the age of eighteen? Or am I going the wrong way, Tom?
It's, it's already in the code, it has to be, they have to be a qualified voter of the city, so.
But that's our code, that's on state statute?
No, it's, there's no state statute that deals with boards of adjustment.
Okay.
So we have to rely totally upon whatever ordinance that you've adopted. And obviously, you can change the ordinance, but it requires, according to ordinance seventy-nine dash eight, that they be a duly qualified voter of the city.
I don't remember the numbers, but I think we have ten thousand voters, about fifteen thousand residents. I mean, do we need to change that to residents? I'm just asking to open a discussion here.
Any comments? I think it's fine the way it is.
I was just going to say, I don't see any need to change it.
I don't think we need to change it, I think it's fine.
And that language is in there, sorry, Chris.
Yeah, you're good.
As far as the, the preferred composition of the board, or backgrounds, right? That language is in the ordinance. Board member should possess professional training or experience in planning, I'm just trying to scroll and find it. I'll, you know.
Yeah, it, it shall be appointed by... Yep, regi, registered voters in position to represent the public interest, and no person shall be appointed with private or personal interests likely to conflict with the general public interest. Each board of adjustment shall be individually considered for appointed by the city council.
I'm looking specifically about the experience of planning law.
I don't see it out here.
You're suggesting changes, Andrew?
Well, I just, I, not necessarily change the ordinance, but i- unless we want to codify it, but I would like that to maybe be considered as part of the reminder of when an agenda item comes up for board of adjustment. It's like, that would be our preference, even if we're not bound to it right now.
Second line in the board adjustment seven oh three, it says, prospective members shall demonstrate by reason of their experience or education, their ability to serve on the board. That's broad.
It is broad.
I mean, can't we do the whenever, do you want to change it to say whenever possible, like the...
Well, right, it just depends on if, if that, so that background is there?
That line is in the city code.
It is in the code.
Of three point eight point two two, under qualifications of members.
Okay.
So obviously, there's been another ordinance that was adopted sometime after nineteen seventy-nine.
That inserted that language?
Yeah.
Okay.
In the code book, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, great. Yeah, I mean, the fact that it's there, then it's like, yes, it's codified, and that's our preference, so just again, kind of going piggybacking off the last one, using that as a reminder in the, the memo for a board of adjustment appointment to make that consideration.
Yes. And then, um, I believe you felt the same way about reappointments? And also alternate members, did you feel the same way about that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we want to make any changes there, do we? No, I think it's perfect.
Okay. And then I also just brought up firefighter pension board of trustees. So that is in the Florida statutes, there's five members to that board, and two are appointed by council. Um, so traditionally, there's only been one applicant, and that applicant's been submitted to city council.
I don't think any changes there, that one's perfect.
Yeah.
Yep.
If there was more than one application, just so I know, how would you want to handle?
I don't, I, I don't ever remember there being more than one applicant, but...
Well, we should plan for
Yep.
the hypothetical, right? Say probably stick with the same as the rest of the quasi-judicial.
Yep.
Comes us in the packet, we vote at the meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we all agree with that, yeah, consensus, yes.
And then I did include charter and ordinance review, that's every ten years now, but I wanted to put it in there just to, just in case it got brought up, I wanted to have the background information. Um, and I was looking that up. Um, it looks like previously for charter, um, council members have sponsored a member each. And then it looks like city clerk and city manager sponsored two members. So that was charter for the last charter review. And then for ordinance, um, council members sponsored a member, member each. And then it looks like at the last one, there were several, several other applications received and council selected two. So, um...
One was Jared.
Yes.
No, it wasn't.
No?
When, um...
I was the alternate, then...
When you have an Andrew, Andrew got elected, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway.
Well, they, they drew names for the alternates too, right? Because they, they think it was to fill the last two spots and then, then pick alternates as well. So.
I, I like sponsoring when those committees come on.
I do too, I do too, I like it.
Yeah. I don't think there's any changes needed on these.
We just changed it from five to ten years too, about a year and a half ago, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so those, those will be coming up in five, five, we're...
We changed it from five to ten.
Okay.
Yeah, and at this point, we're now, what, six years out from ORC?
But the, at the five year, we, we made some changes to the charter, which needed to be done, because it was old stuff, and then I think we're good now. That was you, Felicia, right? You did all that. Oh, Tom. You coached them.
When we had one where it was just, it was single spaced and two pages, all the changes, and I was like, that might have been me, because I was like, um, this should be a semicolon, and this should be a... Remember that? I remember it, still feel bad.
All right.
Okay, oh wait, let's see, oh. Are you ready for the teen members to talk about that? So, um, so right now, it is in there, um, in the resolution that they forfeit the remainder of their term when they turn eighteen. And right now, we do not have any interested teen member applications out there. That is something we could do social media blast for if that's what council wanted. And yes, we will take your direction and what you like to do with teen members.
So I did mention this at the council meeting, I'd like to change it to nineteen or maybe even twenty, and I'm going to give you an example. I was an altar boy till I was twenty, unfortunately, until I went to college, but, I mean, I, you know, I did it. I enjoyed doing it, so I don't know if we want to... We did have a teen member on, I don't know what board it was, I can't remember, but they, they had to leave, because they, they turned nineteen.
Eighteen.
Or eighteen.
I, I think instead of necessarily messing with the age, it's just kind of altering the language of forfeiting their term. If, if we want them to, let them either continue to serve out their, the full remainder of their term, or that full year of that term, but I mean, it's like, worst case, okay, somebody gets on and... That doesn't match up, right? Because it, it must be ages thirteen to seventeen, right? Because then it says when they turn eighteen, they got to forfeit. But we're saying they can appoint them.
Thirteen to eighteen.
Not including eighteen.
Right, but the day, the day you turn eighteen, you can register to vote, then you'd be an elector.
Right, and then you can-
Eligible to serve on the boards as, as alternate and full member, so that's why.
If there is, if there are any vacancies, but...
Yeah.
May I speak to this item?
Come on up, I'm going to let you speak.
This is a suggestion, and I don't know if it's feasible or not. We had on the planning board a teen official member, and I'm not sure why he was there. He really never did put out a lot of information, speak a lot. But is there a way to communicate with the schools to make this accredited course? And get them in here? And as, I don't, we don't do civics class anymore, but learning about government is learning about government. And if, I don't know how you'd reach out to Tarpon or Eastlake, or, you know, well, Tarpon's a little far, but my kids are spongers.
Eastlake in countryside.
Yeah, the coun, yeah, the local schools, and I talked to their administrative staff. That's, and maybe we can get some kids in here, because we don't have any.
So one question real quick, why did he leave? Do you know why they left?
Uh, well, he didn't age out, I, he just disappeared.
Okay.
I believe a lot of the kids were doing it for bright scholars, and they removed the volunteer requirement. Is that correct?
Was that how it was done?
It could be one, it could be one factor.
They now allow work to, uh, for your bright future hours.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dale. Okay.
So when I look at this, and I look at, you know, we don't have any teen members on the ex officio list, we don't have any, uh, applications on file to fill these spots. Like, maybe there's another way to engage teenagers. I know you and I have talked about a couple of ideas about the teen mayor or teen council program.
Junior mayor program, I think is what we last talked about.
Maybe there's a better way to engage the teens, that they become more involved. And I watched, um, I can't remember the gentleman's name, he had the long hair.
Long hair.
Devin?
Devin.
Devin, thank you. Um, he just, he sat there, he, we didn't engage him at the same time he did engage us, so it was kind of like, but maybe something more surrounding what we do as a city and how the government works, and a full lesson in that, and something, we've talked about this a little bit.
So I can speak to that, Jared. So Jared brought up a, like a youth council, teen council, teen program idea of maybe in September, late August. And so that was tabled to me, and so I'm working on bringing that up soon, probably in December. Um, so I'll bring a, I think we're going to call it a vice mayor program to council, um, to... So that will be brought up shortly in December, where they'd probably get a certificate at the end of their term, could gavel in a meeting, um, just something to engage our youth here, our teenagers. They would, we'd probably have a few requirements to finish out, um, but it'd probably take maybe a month or two or a few weeks. Still finding, tuning the details, but I'll be bringing that to council, so that's just so you know. Still finding, tuning the details, but I'll be bringing that to council. So that's just so you know.
Wonderful, thank you.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm okay leaving the ex officio teen members on here? Or, you know, do we, how do we fill the spots and how do we get them engaged? Or just eliminate the teens from this board? But I don't, I don't think there's any harm in leaving, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we should.
Some kid stands up.
I think we should encourage it. And I almost like, um, the city clerk's idea of maybe doing a small social media campaign to try to see if we can generate any, anybody of these teens that might wanna just get involved and get involved in local government.
I mean, one thing that kinda stands out to me, and I don't know if it's something that, you know, obviously teenagers change a lot over time, so maybe a dr- shortening the term as well. It's like, if there's turnover, there's turnover, right? They're, they're not a voting member. But it gives them the chance to participate. They might be interested for a while and then they're, they're not. So putting them on there and say, hey, by the way, we know you're interested and we need you to do, you're gonna be doing this for two years, is kind of a lot to ask as their interests are changing rapidly. So.
So you're, you're thinking about shortening the term to like one year instead of two years?
It's just an idea, I mean.
Does there need to be a term?
Well, right, because it's like, we don't even have a backlog of, well, you're gonna term out after two years, you need to be reappointed. Like, if you wanna do it, we're more than happy to have you. And we'll have two at, two at a time. Yeah.
But, I mean, we can just harm.
Length, yeah.
Let's remove the term, I like that.
Able to, we can take two on a board. And when you're eighteen, you can get in line for a real spot.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if anybody's gonna, you know, from thirteen to eighteen, they're gonna serve on the board, I.
We don't know.
Right, but if it's, you need volunteer hours for something. I know the bright futures thing, but some volunteer hours come up in other capacities, I know that for sure. Plus, it's cool. You get your nameplate, you get to sit up here. I'm, I'm surprised there's not more interest, to be honest.
Yeah.
I agree. One quick story, the Florida League of Mayors, the new president, he's really into teens and educating them in local government. And I signed up for one of his, uh, subboards, so I, I haven't started yet, but I'll keep you guys updated on how that goes.
Yeah.
It's mainly about, um, educating the teen, teens about local government and getting involved, so maybe that'll help.
Anything else?
No.
I think we're good.
And you did all agree on taking the forfeit language out?
No, I don't think we.
We uncover it, go back.
It's like.
However, teenage board member shall forfeit the remainder of his or her term on the date he or she attains the age of eighteen.
I don't think we've ran into that scenario where it would even become an issue, but it's like, okay, they're eighteen and they're still not a voting member, so I, I mean, is there any harm in, in an actual adult finishing out? And now we're getting rid of a term, so it's like, then they're gonna sit there until they're thirty-five.
I don't think that'll happen.
As a teen member, so I think we should keep it if we're gonna nix the, the term length or, or terms at all. You can serve as, for a shorter, as long as you want, up until you're eighteen, starting from thirteen.
Yeah, then you gotta forfeit.
Yeah. That fixes it.
Okay. I, we have a consensus on that, I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Well, okay, so there's one more policy that we could consider as well, um, or discuss for direction. Membership prohibited on more than one board. This is a resolution two thousand three twenty-nine. And it states that if an individual is a member of a board within the city of Oldsmar, he or she shall not be eligible to become a member of another board with the city unless there are no other candidates for that vacancy to be sought. And I know that other board members have applied throughout the years, um, and we usually have to turn away because there's usually a backlog, um, because of that resolution. So I thought I'd also bring that to council for their consideration, to see if you would like to keep that in place or just repeal it. It is up to you.
So I think, I mean, when I was the, on leisure services, I wanted to apply for another board. I don't know if did you? Anyone else?
I had other things on the horizon.
I did, but then, I did, but then we were on the ORC, so I was on those two, plus I was doing a forward panelist citizens advisory committee too. So, yeah, it wasn't like, oh, I also wanna do this one. But I was told my own.
I think, I think the one thing to maybe take into consideration is, as it relates to kind of where we stand now with the quasi judicial boards and trying to get the best person, is, well, if we already have somebody serving and they would be the best person suited for one of these other ones and they're interested, then, but, but we're saying, oh, sorry, you know, you're already there. Do we, are we okay with taking that loss? Because while we're having them serve on a different board already and yet their skillset would also be of most benefit to the vacancy on one of the other boards. Something to think about.
And we have folks who serve on multiple boards now. I mean, I know that, right?
No.
I think there must have.
Don't mark, Mark and Frank both serve on the board of adjustment and veterans.
They do serve on both.
Oh, yeah.
Um, definitely Mark Brill does.
Why do I have?
This, this may have occurred because if there was no other candidates, maybe that's how they got on then. That would be my assumption.
No one else there.
Oh, there, there you go.
No, that, which would make perfect sense, but I mean, it hasn't presented an issue, but.
No.
I mean, is there any harm putting the application on file? Like, if we're gonna do this interview process, then.
I don't think it's any harm to you.
I mean, it can be part of the consideration, I suppose, when we're going through the application process, if there's multiple people. It's like, oh, you already serve on this board, this person doesn't, qualifications are X, Y, whatever it is.
Sure, yeah. We're gonna do the interview and screening, so if there is somebody that's like, really interested, shouldn't.
You'll bring that to us. Bring us to the, bring it to the council.
Yeah, I don't like something like, actually, no, we don't want you to volunteer. I don't like, like they're raising their hand and saying, hey, I wanna, I wanna give you my time here, is, am I allowed to do it? I think that's, that's more of a positive.
So then that would be cause for needing to reconsider this resolution, right?
So it sounds like the consensus is to repeal it. And then it, whatever applications are submitted for the quasi judicial boards and the firefighter pension board, we would, if it includes another board member from another board, they would come to council.
Mm-hmm. Bring us the application.
Okay.
And the application, you, you've marked down every board you're interested in, right?
Right. Yeah, I marked down much more.
Upon submission, yeah.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. So we wouldn't, they wouldn't need to reapply, would they? But is that more?
They could. They could reapply. They could say, oh, now I'm interested. I didn't check that before on my original.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, they could, yeah.
Yeah, they could.
That's, that would be, I think, the scenario versus saying, you have to reapply. It's, it's on them really because of whatever amount of advertising we may or may not do when an opening happens.
So we're.
Tom, is that resolution just about serving on more than one board? So we would just need to repeal it? We wouldn't need to take, we wouldn't need a new resolution? I just wanna make sure, okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Easy.
Anything else?
That was all I had. Is there anything else regarding boards that you would like to give direction on, anything else?
All right, is there anybody else that would like to bring anything up that we haven't discussed?
No, I'd, I'd like the uniform. This is what it's like.
Makes it easier on staff, makes it easier on the board.
Are you happy with everything?
Yes.
And you've got the direction. So we settled on then with the retention too, right, as far as reaching out to people and?
Yes, after the, the two years, doing an email confirmation.
All right.
It's a great idea. Yep, and Jenny's been taking notes, so we have everyone's, um, consist- consensus with the direction to go on these boards.
Wonderful.
All right, city manager, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Tom, anything else? I think we're good.